It's six twenty-nine for me, so I'll start right at thirty. We're right at thirty now. I'll go ahead and get started for our regularly scheduled board meeting from March tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Before we get into the meeting, I do want to take a moment of silence in remembrance of a year since the pandemic was officially recognized as a public health threat here in the United States. And please take a moment in remembrance of all those that suffered, lost through this tumultuous year. Thank you very much. And the governor of Michigan has also requested that we turn on our lights from eight P M. to nine P M. In remembrance as well, for those of you that didn't know that, I'll do so now if you choose to engage in that community activity. With that, I will request that we go into the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Ms. Sebastian, would you please call the role?
Supervisor Graywall?
Here, participating remotely, Pittsburgh Township, Washington County.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Present, participating remotely at Pittsfield Charter Township.
Treasurer Scribner?
Participating from Pittsfield Charter Township in Yammeen says he's having trouble logging in.
Trustee Edwards Brown?
Here, participating remotely from Pittsfield Charter Township.
Trustee Crone?
Present, participating remotely from Pittsfield Charter Township.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Present, remotely from Pittsfield Township, Washtenaw County.
Madam Supervisor, you have six, seven, maybe, members present? I'm gonna try to email them right now.
All right, thank you very much. In the meantime, I will proceed with our work here. Before I request approval of the agenda, you do need to delete eleven point two. The folks were not available to do the presentation today or be available for questions. So we will bring it back to you at the next board meeting, which is that they have said that they will be available. So with that deletion of eleven point two, if I could request a motion to be amended agenda, please.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved in second, and all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Then we are now joined by trustee Joffe, Joffe Yannini. So I'll then move on to the first portion of our public comment period. There's a member of the public that wishes to address the board. Please do note that for our boardroom, we have five minutes, and if you saw, we should state your name and address.
Shall I just go ahead?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Christina Loronas, one fifty-one East Textile Road. I hope you can hear me okay. My connection is not real good tonight, so.
You can hear you?
I got a thumbs up, excellent.
Yes, and I'm just gonna also request the trustees to mute when you're not speaking, because I think that helps with the sound as well to folks that are speaking. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, good idea. I wanted to thank the supervisor for the public forum on the park at Oak Valley and Waters Road last evening. That was very interesting. And you, we, two options have been laid out, whether to put the park on that corner of Oak Valley and Waters Road or immediately adjacent to Hawthorne Ridge. And there's a survey online, and I'm sure that all of you got that information. And then I'd like to, as usual, request a no-through truck signs in accordance with the township ordinance. And the township ordinance states that the signs shall be posted or the township shall cause them to be posted, which means that you just send an email or make a phone call to the Washtenaw County Road Commission. It's really quite the simplest thing almost that you can do. And as has been pointed out, the thaw season is upon us, and our gravel roads in particular in the Pittsfield Preserve neighborhood are going to be damaged if there is commercial truck traffic running through them. Now that the U S twelve bypass on my section of the Pittsfield Preserve neighborhood on Textile Road has been completed and seems to now be coming up on Google Maps, we have endless truck traffic now on our road. And that's very sad, of course, because we fought that so hard in our neighborhood and never wanted that to happen. But it has happened. So the remainder of the neighborhood, though, does need to be protected. So the signs that need to be posted, as we've asked, or as I've asked, I guess, for years now, are Campbell Road, Pear Road, Morgan Road, and Stone School Road. You've already posted Thomas and Martin Road. However, those are short roads that are in between Morgan and Textile, so they kind of end. So where we really need them are on the other roads that are within the neighborhood. I don't know of another neighborhood that has been ignored in this way, and I'm not quite sure why our neighborhood has been ignored as well. This is also the Pittsfield Preserve. There are many visitors besides just the people who live in this area. So we would like to have our health, safety, and welfare taken into account. And then finally, if you could just provide a quick update on where are we headed with our municipal services department? Our director seems to have resigned. We seem to be losing staff there. And I wonder if there could be an update on, we have a thirty million dollar ballpark figure sewer project that's supposed to start this fall, as I understood the description in the working session. And I just wondered where we're at in the search for a new utility services, a new, I think, I think he was last called municipal services director. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in the first portion of our public comment period. Is there another member?
Deborah Nystrom?
Hello, this is Deborah Nystrom. I'm at two eight four two Hawks Avenue. I am the Facebook administrator for the neighborhood group that sent you a letter, which I believe you've all seen as of your informational meeting that happened previously. And I just want to speak to the support that continues to build, because we're getting additional names since that letter was sent in support of the lighting proposal. And I will just speak for myself for a moment, because I'd like to turn it over to my neighbors, who are also on this call, and have them speak. I have been in the neighborhood since two thousand and fifteen. That is when our Facebook group started. So it hasn't been around forever. Facebook, I think, started in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, somewhere around there. But we have three hundred and four members currently. And there is a lot of support for the lighting, the modified lighting proposal. I understand it's just three streets. And my own experience is, I, where I live, on Hawks Avenue, there, it's very dark. I actually have not been able to see my street sign sometimes driving home and missed my street. Of course, we know about the neighbors that were killed, and that's really what kind of kicked things off for our neighborhood to reconsider the lighting proposal as it has been modified. And there also are many small children in our neighborhood that walk without a sidewalk. And we do have speed bumps on my particular street that are relatively recent. They were installed, I think, last year. And I still see cars driving too fast over them, because the speed bumps are not very high. They don't cause damage to cars. Otherwise, some of the cars that speed down here would not go as fast as they're going, although others are respectful. So the street lights, at least on these three main pathways, I think, would be very important for safety and for the children, for the dog walkers, and also for security and crime prevention. So I wanted to raise those issues. And then leave it to my neighbors to talk a little bit more about history that they know about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Wilkins?
Please go ahead.
Hello, this is Leslie Wilkins. I'm at two four seven two Grant Drive in that same neighborhood along with Deborah Nystrom you just heard from. And I'm also speaking today in support of the initiative to install the streetlights pretty much as many streetlights as we can get in that neighborhood. But the three main streets that's been proposed here is a really excellent start. And we're very appreciative of the supervisor's support for this, as we know that that's there. Personally, I'm the mom of two kids. I've been in the neighborhood for fourteen years. So they, when I moved in, they started, you know, started our journey walking to Carpenter School back and forth. And now I've got high schoolers that used to and will soon again hopefully be taking the bus to Huron. And in the mornings, it's dark when my kids have to walk to that bus stop. So it is considered, I mean, I, you know, make sure they've got flashing lights on them when they're walking through the neighborhoods and stuff. But it's something that shouldn't have to happen, you know, that there should be streetlights to protect them more in those areas. I also have a neighbor who was hit by a car when she was walking across Washtenaw. There are, you know, traffic issues, as Deborah spoke to. And I think the streetlights would help that situation. Also, there are, off and on, again, a rash of break-ins in vehicles in our neighborhood. Often, the Facebook page is really useful about kind of putting out the alerts, like, just so you know, this happened to me and my car was broken into or rifled through. And I think a lot of that would lessen if we had streetlights. People would be discouraged from breaking into the vehicles, the vehicles that are even parked in driveways. So it's not, it's not cars that are on the streets. It's right there in our driveways next to our house, which is kind of disconcerting. So that's, I really appreciate this opportunity to speak to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments at this point for the public?
No other hands?
Right. Thank you for our folks that spoke up. Does any vote respond to public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will then move on to five point one. If I could get a motion to approve the minutes for my meeting on February twenty-fourth, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minute of the regular meeting held on February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Moved in second, and all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Thank you. If I can get a motion to approve the minutes for my working session also held on February twenty-fourth.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes of the working session held on February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Second. Moved in second. Any questions, comments, or changes by the board? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Both same sign. We'll then move to communications. If I can get any motion to receive and file, please.
Madam Chair, I move to receive and file communications.
Second.
Moved in second, and I do want to note to the board that there is a letter in that packet with regard to, from the, and I have a green belt, which relates to what we will be considering under new business. I just wanted to make that note there. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Looking for a motion now to approve agenda items eight point one through eight point seven. Same agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to consist agenda eight point one to eight point seven.
Okay.
Moved in second. Any questions or comments by the board? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. We'll turn it over to you, Madam Supervisor, for your winter collection update report.
Good evening. February sixteenth was the due date for taxes to be paid on time. Unfortunately, severe weather conditions caused our offices to be closed. Therefore, we extended the payment due date through February seventeenth. With the COVID nineteen pandemic upon our offices, our offices urged residents and businesses to take advantage of the many payment options listed on the back of their bills. The majority of the payments were received by the U S Postal Service and our Dropbox. Also, we received winter tax payments from other payment options as followed. T C F Bank, we received one hundred and sixty-two payments. Bank of Ann Arbor received two hundred and twenty payments. And our online payments received eight hundred and fifty-eight payments. We have collected ninety-eight point five percent of the overall tax roll, which is consistent with past years. Our community is fortunate that we haven't seen any reduction in our tax payments received due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thank you.
Any questions or comments by anybody on the board? Seeing none, if I could get a motion to receive and file the update?
Madam Chair, I move that we receive and file the winter collection update from the treasurer's. Second.
Moved in second, and all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. We'll go to eleven point one, if I can get a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the purchase and installation of streetlights per D T E recommendations in the Washtenaw Heights neighborhood for an estimated cost not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, including contingency.
For, moved and supported. Any questions or comments by the board? Of course, we had members of the public speak to it, and I tried to be as expansive as I could in the background statement. But sure, we'll try to address, and I know that Ms. West is in attendance as well. So we'll do our best to address questions and concerns. Yes, sir, that's all.
I just have a general comment. I do like this project, because I do, do you think that there are safety issues over there? And that is very populated on that end. But at the same time, I would just like to mention that I really think that the township should look into the possibility of potentially getting solar municipal streetlights, because the ongoing energy cost is, is a lot of money, right? And so I, I have no idea if the township has ever looked into it, but I feel like it would fit very nicely with our sustainability and our green initiatives. So thank you.
Yes, and I believe when we had the working session the last time around, and D T E reps were there. At this point, they're not installing the solars. But it is something that we obviously will continue to look at as a choice as we move forward, because they are, I am in conversations with D T E to see how we can, we push the mind green program. I don't know if you're aware of that. We pushed that a lot last year. So there is a lot of different choices that are available to source power from a grid that's coming through renewables. And so those initiatives, they're very much engaged in with D T E, but, yep.
And I, and I would just like to follow up with, there, there are some companies that offer installation in solar municipal streetlight that, that are not connected with D T E. So I, you know, I, I don't know what the cost is. I tried to look into it, and I do think it's, it's a little bit more than what a regular streetlight would cost. But I think over the long run, it pays, pays for itself, because you, you're not paying the fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions by the board? Okay, seeing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign?
Aye.
Was that a, aye? Do we have any nays? No nays. The motion carries unanimously. I do want to recognize Ms. Nystrom for her continued partnership with the township. And it is with a lot of gratification that I see this project coming to this conclusion and really look forward to continuing to work with you and your neighborhood to improve the safety and quality of life for each one of you. Thank you for being here this evening. We'll then move, and of course, we'll keep the board involved as well as in remembrance of any changes, et cetera, on the project. We'll move on to eleven point two. Oh, we dropped eleven point two. So we will now do what is now termed in the original agenda as eleven point three, which is our utility service agreement with the Celine Schools. If I could get a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into a utility service agreement with Celine Area Schools and the city of Celine, subject to township attorney approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and again, I'll try to make the background statement as explanatory as possible. We'll do our best to answer questions. Yes, please, go ahead.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I'm really glad to see, well, I hope that we support this, because I think it's really important for the young girls playing on that field to have access to water. And the idea or the thought that they would not have access to water is rather troubling. So I'm glad to see this on the agenda, and I hope that we support it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I like that. I'm gonna let this, not the superintendent, but the temporary superintendent know that. Very much in favor. Yes, Treasurer Scribner, you have your hand up?
Yes, I agree with Linda. I think this is something we have to support for health reasons and for comfort. Thank you.
Just a problem, yes, sir.
I just want to clarify here that the Celine Area Schools is not gonna move ahead on this project at this time, from what I'm reading, right? They're gonna, it'll be done within the next five years, but it doesn't look like things are gonna start until, twenty-five.
That is correct. So if you recall, we, the board did approve the resolution, which is attached. And the reason that we're bringing this back is because of the time that their Celine Schools plan was to go ahead with the connection and the services in two thousand and twenty. Then, of course, pandemic happened, and also many things have changed for so many folks. And it is my belief that at this point, the school is just taking a step back and looking at things in terms of how and when to do it in a more comprehensive and thoughtful fashion. And so we, of course, didn't want this to get lost in the mix of things, as typically sometimes things do. So what this agreement will do is ensure that when the school is ready, and their estimation was it would not be more than five years. They're hoping it would be much sooner than that. It could even be next year in a couple of years. But I put a five-year time limit, just in case, again.
Okay.
So if you say we just want to be prepared for eventuality, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Additional questions or comments by the board? All right, seeing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. We'll then move on to eleven point four.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I move to authorize the supervisor and clerk to enter into a contract with Ferman Tree Service for pre-construction work for Platte Road Greenway Phase Two, for a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, subject to the township attorney approval.
Second.
Moved in second, and again, let's put stuff in the background statement, but we did have a public forum for it a week or so ago, and things are plugging along. And this is the next step in the process. All seven questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? All right, I'm looking for a motion to receive and file, like, twenty twenty planning commission report.
Madam Chair, I move to receive the file, two thousand and twenty Pittsfield Charter Township Planning Commission Annual Report.
Second.
Moved in second, there's no questions or comments, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sign? Right, we'll then move on to new business, which is a consideration of the planning commission's recommendation to deny the first reading of Z O A number twenty-one dash two one three. We do have Mr. Carline in attendance. I'm gonna request him to just give us a brief briefing on this topic insofar as the process and how and why when the planning commission did approve or did put forth the denial and why and all of that good stuff. So, Mr. Carline, I will turn it over to you, sir.
I would also ask that people who are not speaking can, if they commute their mics, because the, the sound back, the feedback is getting.
There's a lot of disturbance. There's a lot of disturbance, yes. I, I agree. With that, Mr. Carline, please take it away.
Thank you, Supervisor Graywall. Can everyone hear me? Great, thank you. It's a pleasure being with you tonight. The planning commission considered this application, and the application was to develop two hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, two hundred and six of single-family site condominium lots on an eighty-acre site. It's commonly referred to as a Geddes Farm site. There were two types of proposed development, lot type, lot types, and these differentiated by size. Fifty-four lots were gonna be single-family lots that would be compatible with our R one B zoning designation. The remaining one hundred and fifty-two single-family lots were gonna be a designation that were approximately half the size in square footage than our R one B. Essentially, was not a zoning district that we had in the township. So because of those reasons, the applicant had submitted the application to what we call planned unit development. And what planning development is, is it's a development process that allows flexibility in zoning ordinance for, in exchange for a commensurate benefit to the township. Looking through the application and considering the standards, the planning commission felt that it did not meet the required standards of the planned unit development. First off, the applicant, it was found by the planning commission that the applicant was not consistent with the master plan. The site is master planned for agricultural preservation, which is either, like it notes, agriculture and/or very low-density single-family residence. So, so these do not comport with that requirement. Furthermore, the proposed development would have required the extension of utilities to it, sewer and water. And this is outside of the adopted utility boundary of the township. So it would have required a significant policy amendment to that urban service boundary. And for those reasons, as well as receiving public comments, the planning commission made a recommendation via resolution that's included in your packet to the township board to not approve the rezoning of this property from agriculture to planned unit development.
Thank you, Mr. Carline. Appreciate that succinct briefing there. Do folks have any questions for him?
I have a question on, there are two resolutions that we're considering. Do we consider both or just one?
So I can walk you through the procedural matters. I just want to make sure if you have any substantive questions for Mr. Carline. You dressed both, but I will get to that, Trustee Crone. I know it's, I walk you through it in a different, but no questions for Mr. Carline. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. Procedurally to your question, Trustee Crone, we are going to first vote on thirteen point one, which is a resolution of approval of the rezoning. And then we will go to thirteen point two, which is a resolution of denial for the planning commission's recommendations. So we will vote on each one of those separately. Is that a question?
Yes.
There's no other questions or comments? I'm gonna turn it to you, Ms. Sebastian, or actually, I need a motion first to adopt a resolution twenty-one dash one four.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution receiving zoning ordinance amendment on first reading, R Z twenty dash zero one, GADIS Vista, Z O A twenty-one dash two one three, resolution twenty-one dash fourteen.
Second. Moved in second, and Ms. Sebastian, would you please call the role?
Supervisor Graywall?
No.
Clerk Gonzaldi?
No.
Treasurer Scribner? Treasurer Scribner? No. Sorry. Edwards Brown?
No.
Trustee Jaffer?
No.
Trustee Crone?
No.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Do you have muted?
Nope.
No.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven nays.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one dash one five.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution declining a rezoned property, R Z two zero dash zero one, GADIS Vista, Z O A number two one dash two one three, resolution number two one dash one five. Gaddis Vista, ZOA Number 21-213, Resolution Number 21-15.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Ms. Sebastian?
Clerk Gonzaldi?
Yes.
Treasurer Scribner?
Yes.
Trustee Edwidge Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Jaffer?
Yes.
Trustee Crone?
Yes.
Trustee Erda Thompson?
Yes.
Supervisor Graywall?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor, you have seven ayes.
Thank you. We'll then move on to the liaison and trustee reports for this evening's meeting. Do folks have any reports? Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I don't have a report, but I neglected to raise my hand in time to ask this question under Communications. My question is, when we have people who separate from the township, do we do exit interviews?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so do we do exit interviews for everyone, or?
That is my understanding.
Okay, then the reason I, I posed the question is because we seem to have a number of folks leaving. And I'm just curious as to why they're leaving, especially from particular departments within the township. So is it possible to get access to that information, or no?
So I just speak to that sort of, you know, from a policy, I'm just gonna actually wait to do it as part of what I will be bringing to you. But I think essentially what happens, and you know, now that I've been doing this for a long time, you have cycles. I've noticed you kind of go through cycles in each department. For a long time, Human Resources, in fact, went through a period where we just had a lot of, it was called the revolving door. We had people coming and going and things happen. What's happening currently with the utilities and municipal services that you're bringing up has to do, I think, with sort of that point having been reached over there. You know, it was always the Department of Utilities. You had Planning as a separate department, then you had other departments. So I think it's time to really step back and look at what the functions are that are being conducted within that larger department and how we can position ourselves better to move forward with a key slate and bring in some fresh perspective. I think you just get it to a point where you need to bring in new people, new thoughts. The folks that are there probably felt that they were sort of tapped out and reached the limit of what they needed to contribute to our community at a given space and time. And so I think I always look at these points of cycles to step back and think about what we're doing and how we can do it better. So I will be bringing back some thoughts. I haven't had time to do that. Obviously, I didn't have time for this board meeting. This all happened very quickly because, you know, we've had a lot of things happen in addition. But at the next board meeting, I will be sharing some thoughts and suggestions with the board for your review and consideration at that time.
Okay, and based on what you said, it's safe then to assume that former Director Lyons, who left and came back, will not likely be coming back?
Yeah, no, no, absolutely not. And I think really it's, and we have, I mean, he's a resident too. So we have, you know, folks that we've worked with for many years and continue to be partners in many different ways. So I don't want to just, you know, slam each other on the door. We have great partnerships with many folks that have worked here previously with us too. But, you know, in the capacity that he was, no, I think really the goal now is to move the department in a fresh direction and really bring it more in line, as I was speaking with Mr. Carline, actually just today, with regard to the, the sort of the crux of what we're doing here on sustainability issues. So I think that's really where we're positioning ourselves as we move forward. That's where our community wants us to move forward, and that's what we'll do. And we have a chance to do that now. And I think that's what I'll be suggesting and recommending. But I'll flesh out my thoughts and suggestions and bring them to you like I said at the next board meeting.
Thank you. And the second thing I wanted to bring up was, as I shared with all of you, this Friday and Saturday, we, Pittsfield Township, will be doing a mass distribution first at the Hamptons of Clover Lane, which is on Hunt Drive, Friday from 5 to 7. And Trustee Jaffer will also be there. And again, on Saturday, from 12 to 2, at the Pines of Clover Lane. So we were fortunate enough to acquire, thanks to Jessica West, thank you, Jessica. We acquired 6,000 masks from Washtenaw County, and it's very unlikely that we will distribute all of those this weekend. But we're looking at other areas within Pittsfield Township that may be able to benefit from these KN95 masks. We reached out to the management at Galen Co. Hills and are waiting to get a schedule from them. We were able to identify the Clover Lane properties based on the Opportunity Index that Washtenaw County recently completed. So we know that there are other areas within the township which could benefit as well. And we will work to make sure, as long as there are free masks to be had, that Pittsfield Township is part of that distribution. That's it. Thank you.
I just want to applaud you. I mean, this is really, this is amazing. Thank you so much. I think that's where we come together as a team. So really appreciate you stepping up and representing our community and the values that you also adhere to. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Additional reports from the board at this time, anything? I do want to just follow up really quickly on our conversation from the last working session we had specifically with regard to OMA and reconvening in person for public meetings. We are proceeding at this point with a plan to retrofit more as tall to provide for sufficient spacing both at the podium and then also for the public at large in post-class C limits. These are all discussions that we had last time. But I also wanted to make you aware that there has been a bill that was introduced, I believe, last week to extend the deadline for virtual meetings to June. I'm not, it's in committee right now and don't know what legs it has on it. But just wanted to make you aware of it. Of course, we're not going to stop what we're doing. So these things will run parallel. But I'll be sure to keep you, sort of, to let you know if there's any changes on that front. But at this time, there has nothing, nothing has changed substantially on that front. So we're moving full force forward, like I said, with the retrofits and providing for a safe space for folks to meet at in person, if we're required to do that, starting next month. All right, that was all I had from my side. There's no other reports. I'll move to the second portion of our public comment period. If there's another member of the public that wishes to speak, please do so.
Leslie Wilkins? Good evening. Just on behalf of the Washtenaw Heights neighborhood, wanted to thank Supervisor Grohl and the trustees for their support and investment in our neighborhood's safety. And we really appreciate the support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, seeing none, if I could get a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I move, will you adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all was in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same side? Well, thank you all very much for attending. Stay well and be well.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.